On Mornings with Maria, starting at 6:00 AM Eastern Time, right here on FBN. Well, thank you so much for having us in your homes. Thank you for watching. Charles Payne is here now with Making Money.
Thank you very much, E-Mac, and good evening. I'm Charles Payne. We had a mixed session in the market. Tech stocks tumbling big time, blue chips though, holding up pretty good. The street focusing embracing to E-Mac's point for tomorrow's critical jobs report. Meanwhile, officials on both sides of the aisle condemning the anonymous article, demanding that the Times identify its author. This as the list of White House officials who have now denied writing that opinion piece grows. Here to discuss political contributor Tammy Bruce, who is also the independent women's voice president.
So, I mean, it's a lot more between us doing each other. Certain things, okay, no problem. Don't give it to them. Don't force them to take it.
They don't know really what it means. I don't know. That development over there with you. I came down here raising hell about that.
It was one of the best things.
Yes, I don't know. Some of these destroy their property.
That's right. It ain't property.
Yeah, but anyway, I know what you mean.
I think unofficially.
I didn't read it.
So, he's saying that they were the ones responsible for the obvious. So, he's getting something like that. I mean, this is holy out of the rails, and people driving something to this. It's crazy down right now.
That's all right. Let's call a meeting, no order.
Really crazy.
It's surreal. It's good. We're all present except for Ben. Ben will be absent this evening. Item two, at the commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda, September the 6th, 2018. Hearing none. Item three, presentation on the library programs.
Yeah, Jenny's going to, our library director is going to do that. And if you haven't been to the library lately, you should go take a look because it's a very cheery, clean, great place to learn. And she's going to tell us more about what we've been up to, what you guys have been up to.
Hello. My name is Jenny Rigir. For those of you that don't know me, I am the library director at the Public Library of Enid and Garfield County. And I'm here today to kind of bring you up to speed with what the library is doing. Our mission at the Public Library of Enid and Garfield County is to make all of our services available to anybody who needs any and everything that the library can provide, regardless of how they need it or how they want it. We can provide just about anything to anyone in any way, shape, or form that they desire it. We believe in empowering the individual, and so it's not our place to judge how an individual comes to us. It's our job to provide for them the information that they are seeking, and we do that as best we can among a variety of services that we provide for them. A little bit of history for the library. Our library was formed in 1899 by a group of women here in Enid. They're the Women's Study Group. They are names that would be familiar if you came and looked at the plaque in the library, women that are still, family names that are still known here in town. In 1908, they got a Carnegie grant. They were very popular in the United States at the time, funded by Andrew Carnegie. In 1910, the Carnegie Library was completed and built. In 1964, where our current public library is housed, that building was completed. The Carnegie Library itself was condemned somewhere in the 80s. Our current library is on the historical record for its design and architecture. In 2009, we got a grant for the Jose Way, which is a kind of layout inside the library. It genrefies the layout of the library inside of it. And we used that money to not only genrefy the adult fiction inside the library, but we also used it to renovate the walls and the floor. If you come into the library and you see the beautiful tile on the entryway, that was all part of the Jose Way renovation. It took two years for that renovation to be completed. And in 2018, in 2018, on this slide, we will go back to achieving some state funding, which is some exciting information for the city. We are funded solely by city budget, which is provided through the city. We don't receive any county funds, although our name is the Public Library of Enid and Garfield County. We don't receive any county funds at all. We are provided solely by the city. And like I said, this year, we will finally get back to receiving some state aid, and so we're really excited about that. The current services that we provide are typical services that you would see in the library. We do provide storytime, which is absolutely wonderful. When I came onboard to the library, I was initially hired to be the children's librarian, and we had storytime for one age group done once a week. And that wasn't quite enough. We had quite a lot of people that came for that. And in the four years since I was hired there, we have moved that in such a way that now we have storytime twice a day for two different age groups. So, we're really excited about the breadth of children that we're now reaching. So, baby time happens twice a week, and preschool storytime happens twice a week. So, that's really exciting for us. We've also moved away from librarian-driven acquisitions to totally patron-driven acquisitions in our library. So, if you come into the library and you see the books that are on our shelves, those are there because patrons have asked for them. All of the books that are on their shelves are there because someone in the community, outside of the community, a patron in our community has said, hey, I really wish I could read, and we have gone out and gotten it for them. We have absolutely zero library fines. We don't leave in them. They didn't, they weren't beneficial in getting our books returned back to the library. They weren't gaining anything for us, so we simply got rid of them. We do tons of genealogy research, not only in our local area, but also out into the area. We get emails, tons of emails every week, and send those upstairs to our research librarian, Sarah. And she is amazing with genealogy research, and so that's a big outreach for our community. She's also really great with local history. She's amazing with that. We provide tons of online services, including databases. We add databases to our services every year. At the last count that I did, we had 37 databases that we provide our community, all free and clear. So, we're really excited about the database services that we provide. We also provide free computer and e-reader classes. One of the things that I'm most proud of that we've added since I was the director is we take an entire week after Christmas, and we provide all of the librarians set out time and set that aside from our regular schedules, and we provide can I help you time. And it's for patrons to bring in their new electronics, and so that we can help them set those electronics up, and let me show you how to work your new iPad. Let me show you how to work your new Kindle. Let me show you how to work your new Nook. And not only do we set those devices up for them, but we also get them set up with our databases so that they're hooked up with our online databases, so that they're hooked up and set up with our online libraries, so that when they take those devices home, they can get going and are able to check out and read and just go as quickly as they get home. So, we're really excited about that program that we provide. We have internet capability, both in our library, in a computer station, and wireless that is available to anybody that has a library card, and also anybody that walks off of the street, provided that they have a photo ID with them. We are not picky. If you can show us a photo ID and you need to print something, we can help you out. If you walk off of the street and you have a photo ID, we will help you get what you need done. We are a fan of helping people. One of my other favorite things that we provide at the library is adult reading groups. There is a huge homebound population in our town, and so one of the great things that our adult programmer, Margot, does is she, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, she gathers up books out of the library, and she checks those out to individual patrons who are homebound, and she sends those out into the community, so that even those patrons who are not able to come into the library are able to still read books. And it's just an amazing service that she provides. She's excellent at that.
Do you have a lot of patrons from outside of Enid?
Yes.
To the library?
Yes.
You track that?
Yes. The last time I checked, it was, I would say somewhere around 10,000. We have around 65,000 patrons in the library, or 65,000 library card holders, and the last time I checked, it was around 10,000 patrons who were outside of what we would consider our area, which would be Garfield County, about 10,000 outside of Garfield County.
I think that's great.
Not including digital access cards.
I think that's great.
We do too. We're very proud of it. We also provide video conferencing services, which is something that not a lot of people know that we provide. We are incredibly proud of that. If you know of a company in town that needs to come in, and they need to have a video conference, but they don't have an area that can do that, we absolutely have those capabilities, and we can get you hooked up and get that taken care of for you. It's an underutilized aspect of the library, but we can absolutely get you on track and get that taken care of. Another growing program that we provide is Therapy Literacy Dog that comes and works in the library. He comes every Wednesday. Doc, you might know him from being seen around town. Doc the Dane comes and reads with children every Wednesday. He is incredibly popular. We've even instituted a regular reader card. It kind of looks like a baseball card. It's got a picture of Doc on one side, and after kids have read so many sessions with Doc, they get a prize for having read to him so many times, and that's a lot of fun. We do a mitten tree in the holidays and encourage people to knit mittens or sew fleece mittens, and we put a mitten tree up in the library, and people can donate mittens to the mitten tree. That way, some of our patrons who are less than solid can come into the library and get what they need off of the mitten tree, and they don't have to be cold in the winter. We have instituted a new, we have instituted new teen and elementary reading groups, and I am so excited about both of these reading groups. The teen reading group this fall is called YA Readers, and it's for not only teens, but also adults who like to read YA books, and I am absolutely guilty of this. And it's a group for people who like to read young adult books. And I'm super excited for this reading club to kick off. It's going to kick off next week. And the elementary reading club is a great reading group. I think it's also going to be fabulous. It's called Deal, Drop Everything, and Listen. So many times, our kids don't have the skills to listen, and so Karen, our children's programmer, has developed this idea to have a reading club that just teaches kids how to sit still and appreciate listening. And so she's going to spend her time reading little snippets of books. Kids can get an idea about what's really popular in children's literature, and listening is the idea behind it. So, I'm super excited about that. And we also have an anime and manga club. Super excited about that. Our Friends of the Library Club is growing, and that's really exciting. Their October book sale, I think, is going to be really impressive. One of the things that we did this summer for the first time, which I'm hoping that we will be able to do again next summer, is our Lunch Bunch program. We partnered with the Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma, Parks and Recreation here in the city, and with Loaves and Fishes. And through those three partnerships, we were able to feed almost 2,500 meals and snacks in the city to kids who were in need. And I'm so proud of what we did this summer at Champion Park. It was, and that's only what we did in six weeks. And so I'm so proud of what we did there. It, I'm going to show you some pictures of that in just a little bit, and it absolutely was one of the best investments in our city, I think, that we've done. I'm really proud of that. We also have a cookbook reading club that's coming up later this month, and it's all about people who maybe don't like to read fiction or don't like to read nonfiction. They want something a little bit more constructivist, and so it's all about, here, let's take a gander at a cookbook and see if you can find something in there that you like to cook. And so that's, it's just a great out-of-the-box kind of way of thinking. We also have yoga and Tai Chi classes, art classes for adults, teenagers, and elementary students, and we have STEM classes. We just kind of have something for everybody. Honestly, the library really and truly, our programming is based on things that people have asked us to do. And if we don't have something that you want to see, it's because you haven't asked. We really and truly, not only our acquisitions, but our programs are based on things that people have asked us to do. So, if there's not something going on at the library that you want to see, you should ask for it, because odds are, we are happy to do that. Things that happen at the library all of the time, we are constantly curating our library. We are well aware that there are books in our library that have been there since 1964. We know that. And so we are constantly looking at what's been here since 1964, what hasn't checked out in the last 10 years, what can we do to fix that? Can we move it to someplace else where it can get checked out? Is this a book that's still interesting to somebody? If it's not, let's find a book that is more interesting. Let's get this moving. We are also constantly updating our software, whether that's the software that's on our computers, whether that means updating our computers, whether that means updating the iPads that are available. We are constantly on the brink of technology, looking to see what's the most popular something that's going to help our patrons. Future projects for the library is, right now, we are concentrating on helping the Friends of the Library. The Friends of the Library has been an organization that has literally been around since the library opened, and we are most interested in helping them because they have helped us for so long. In July, the Friends of the Library organization was down to four members, and at one point, those four members, they were only down to two active members, and that was sad and not helpful at all. And so right now, the library is concentrating on helping the Friends of the Library become more robust, become more lively, and become an organization that can be more helpful to the library. And so our concentration right now on future projects is really and truly all about the Friends of the Library, making it an organization that can grow and can sustain itself, so that in turn, it can help us grow and sustain. Some of the things that the Friends of the Library do are, they sell books. We get books donated to the library on a regular basis. And when those books are donated to the library, the first thing that we do is we look through those books, and we decide if those books can be donated to the library, can they be used in the library? If they can't be used in the library, then we give those books to the Friends, and then they in turn sell those books. If they can sell them, then that money in turn makes its way eventually back into the library. They also sometimes sell other things this summer. They had a paperback book sale, and they also sold Gecko bookmarks that one of them had knitted and created. She sold them for a dollar apiece, and I loved mine. It was fabulous, until my cats ate it, rude things. But they're just a wonderful organization. In this month alone, they donated $2,076.40 to us, just to help us do things that we wouldn't have been able to do otherwise. So, we're really proud of the Friends of the Library, and we hope that they are able to continue to help us in the future. These are some of the other programs that we've done. One of the things that we have really concentrated on in the last year is to really up our marketing game. We do a lot of marketing on social media. We spend a lot of time on Facebook. We spend a lot of time on Instagram. We spend a lot of time on Twitter, and we spend a lot of time on our LED screen that's outside of the library. And we are well aware that our presence on social media and on our screen outside of the library needs to be bright. It needs to be beautiful. It needs to be catchy. And because of those things, we have worked really hard to create a look that is pretty specific to us. And so we've spent a lot of time making our look very simple, very concise, and these are some of the flyers that we have come up with for some of those things. This is another one of the programs that we have come up with recently that is another one of those things that I am really, really, really proud of. Enid Author Fest, this coming year, we will be going into our third year for Enid Author Fest, and it's actually grown so large that it will outgrow the library in March, when it happens, and we are looking for somewhere else to host it. Last year, we had 45 authors from Enid and the state, and actually outside of the state as well. And they come for a day and sit around the library, and they've done book talks, and they've done book panels, and they've done chats, and it's absolutely book readings. It's just been an absolutely wonderful day. The woman at the microphone is Martha. Martha was actually our artist in residence for most of the summer. Martha is originally from Waukita, Oklahoma, and she spent most of the summer writing her autobiography with us, and that was really cool because she spent most of her time in a, in one of our study rooms, and you could walk by and watch her working. She had all kinds of timelines strung up, and she had her, she worked with her back towards us, so you could see her typing, and it was just really a neat process to watch her work as she was going. But Author Fest is, it started out very, very small. Margot came to me and said, what do you think about having a thing where authors came and we fed them lunch, and maybe they did some readings? And I said, hey, that sounds like a great idea. Let's do that. And at the first Author Fest had about 25 people, and then the second Author Fest had 45 people, and we have already had people committing to the next Author Fest. I think the last time I checked with Margot, she said we had 55 people already committed, and we can't have that many people in the library. And so we are, we are already looking for places to have the next one. So, I'm super excited about the growth that Author Fest already had. As I said to you before, I was going to talk to you a little bit about Lunch Bunch. Lunch Bunch was our major initiative this summer for feeding the neighborhood, and it was the brainchild of Karen Boardman. She is our children's programmer. She has a heart the size of Alaska. And really and truly, she came, we were reading on listservs. Lots of libraries were getting into, hey, what are you guys doing about summer reading, and are you feeding your kids, and how are you making that happen, and what, how is this working for you? And she came to me, and she said, what are we doing? And I said, I don't know. I've never gotten into this before. What do you want to do? And she said, I don't know, but here is this idea that I had. And I said, cool, do some research. And she came back the next day with an application from the Regional Food Bank, and I said, cool, let's go. Let's try that. And about 10 days later, we were approved as a site. And so then we called Loaves and Fishes, and they agreed to partner with us. And then Karen called Parks and Recreation, and they agreed to partner with us. And so we had a site, and then we had a place to store our food, and we were going. And literally, Karen had something planned for these kids to do every day. As you can see, she had guys from technical services come, and they came and brought down all kinds of fun equipment for the kids to look at, and she had the police come down one day, and the kids got to climb in their cruisers, and that was their favorite day. And the firemen came, and that was so much fun. And I mean, they just, the kids had so much fun, and they got fed every single day. And Doc came one day, and they did yoga one day, and they did finger knitting one day, and they got stories every day. And for six weeks, we fed hungry kids, and it was some of the best community outreach that I've ever been part of, and I couldn't be more proud of my library for being part of that. It was just absolutely wonderful. The other thing that we do in the summer is we have summer reading volunteers, and this is for teenagers, usually seventh graders on up, and it is another one of those things that I get a little bit emotional about because summer reading volunteers are kids that usually join us, usually in the seventh grade, and sometimes, sometimes by the time they get old enough to get a job, they don't come back. But there were a few, there were three actually this year, who were seniors in high school. And so they, you know, they gave up time for having summer jobs, and they spent their summer job time with us for four summers. And it was just absolutely wonderful to see them grow and learn in the program for that long. Teen volunteers come to the library, and they give up six weeks of their summer to spend time in the library, and they help with the summer reading program. They help get kids into whatever we have going on. If we have an art program, they help Karen facilitate the art program. If we have something going on outside, they help wrangle kids with that. They, they just kind of do whatever it is that we ask them to do. They, they help in the back. They help on the floor. They, they help with books. I mean, they just, they're just an extra set of hands wherever we need them in the library, and it's such a busy time for us. Typically, from May until July, we go from a regular patron count of around 10,000 to regularly around 13,000 patrons in the library monthly through, from May to July. And so these teenagers who show up and help us are absolutely indispensable, and the fact that they give up time to do that is just, just really the most wonderful thing, I think. And just really, really, really proud that they give of that time for us, and we get really close to them, and they are just absolutely spectacular. So, some really great things happening at the library, and we really do, we have something absolutely for everybody. It doesn't, it doesn't matter what age you are, it doesn't matter what age you aren't. We really do have something for everybody. It doesn't matter how old you are, we'll give you a library card. It doesn't matter where you live, we'll give you a library card. We really want the library to be utilized. We are more concerned with having a literate society than having a illiterate society. We don't, we don't care. We want you to be in the library. We want you to be having fun in the library. One of the things that popped up on my Facebook feed this morning, as I was prepping, was a meme about libraries and how libraries used to be places where people would go, and they were dusty, and they smelled of old books, and they were quiet, and there was a nasty old lady who sat in the corner, and she shushed you about everything. And in my library, shush is a dirty word. We don't say it. We know that learning is loud, and learning is messy, and, and none of that is done in my library. We're not going to shush you, and we're not going to tell you to be quiet because we know. Learning is loud, and learning is messy, but it's also a lot of fun. So, come on down to the library and have some fun with us, because we laugh a lot down there. I often say to my librarians, this is the best job in the city, and people who don't want to work here are silly. So, that's the library. Any questions?
Yes, I actually have two questions.
Yes, sir.
I know a while back that there was a pig at the library.
Yes, sir.
But what happened to the pig?
She lives at Benny's Barn now. When she was purchased, it's my understanding, and understand that this is well before my time, but it's my understanding that she was purchased on the understanding that she was going to be a mini- was gonna be a miniature pig, meaning that she wouldn't ever be much larger than about five or ten pounds. She was much larger than that. And she lived basically in a closet. She was, I'm guessing about a hundred and fifty pounds by the time I was the director, and it wasn't fair for her to live in the closet. And so, I worked with Gerald to find a better place for her. And so, now she lives at Benny's Barn, and she is much happier.
She's eating well, awesome.
That's what I understand.
She is, she is eating well.
Yeah.
Wouldn't want her to be unhappy. Uh, one, one other question I've got pertains to the title of Garfield County, Enid and Garfield County Library. I know in the past that Garfield County has placed money in the library.
Yes.
And I wonder, I wonder why it quit, or was it just a matter of us not asking for any money anymore, or what?
My understanding is that in two thousand eight, um, we acquired some of that land, the city acquired some of that land, in exchange for the name staying the same, but we lost the county funding.
What land are you talking about?
The land that the, um, property sits on.
Well, it's been sitting on that property for a long time.
I agree, but it, that's all before my time, and I'm just going with what I heard. That's, that's all politics before my time, and I don't really know. I can just say, "This is what I heard."
I think they ought to participate financially.
Well, I think that is accurate, that, uh, they, they gave up the land, it was their land, something like that. Uh, they, they did contribute, it was a relatively small amount. We thought it was a fair exchange. And there's a whole lot of programs, we would love to have participation from anybody, but as you know, our role in local government is we provide the services most of the time, so...
If it's got their name on it, I think they would wanna participate financially on an ongoing basis.
Well, I would be glad to set up a meeting with the county commissioners and go over there with you. I'd visit with them about that sometime.
I think we should.
I will tell you that we are required to have a county representative on our library board.
So, they're represented.
I, I just hate to see us pass up any money.
Nothing ventured, nothing...
We don't, we don't pass up money.
No, we don't. We're working hard to get the state funding.
Nothing ventured, nothing gained.
Amen. Other questions I can answer?
Do you have any tutoring programs?
Several, actually. Um, we have individuals that come into the library to provide tutoring, and they do that on an individual basis. As far as tutoring that happens by our librarians, no. Um, we have, including me, and custodians, and all of that jazz, we have seventeen staff members, and we are understaffed. Uh, I'm just gonna be real frank with you. We are understaffed and don't have the time in our day to do that, but we are aware of multiple people in the community who can provide that. If you know of somebody who needs tutoring, have them get in touch with me, and I can point them in the right direction. In addition to that, there are multiple, um, homeschooling and epic teachers who are constantly in the building, and so, there is always somebody who is either knowledgeable or a certified teacher in the building, and we can probably make something happen.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Item four, update on Federal Emergency Management Agency flood insurance rate map. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, uh, this is an update on, as you said, the, uh, RISMAP part of FEMA. I will want to, um, start off with, uh, actually, back in May, we did a presentation on stormwater management, and part of that was covering the Federal Emergency Management Agency's involvement in RISMAP. I'll get into that in just a minute. The, um, the reason why, again, the reason why we are in the FEMA program is that it provides, uh, it provides a method for our residents can acquire flood insurance. So, to still keep, to have flood insurance available, uh, the cities and the communities have to be involved in the, um, federal agency program, which is, um, which is the federal insurance, uh, RISMAP program. Now, they are currently looking, improving, uh, that program, and they're doing that through a system they call, uh, RISMAP. And RISMAP, from, uh, FEMA's standpoint, is basically looking at watershed, they're looking at development improvements by the watershed. In this case, it's, we're in the Lower Cimarron-Skelton watershed. So, that watershed includes an area from here down to Cimarron, and on the other side of Cimarron. There are four projects, uh, four improvement projects or four studies being done by FEMA in that area. They are for Enid, of course. There's also doing one for Kingfisher, Oklahoma City, and Logan County. But we wanna talk about one in, uh, that's been done or prepared for Enid. Uh, what, for the Enid system, they have, uh, been looking at, studying and expanding their, uh, the floodplain boundaries, or improving the floodplain boundaries in a couple areas. One of them is the metal, the tributaries to Metal Lake, and I'll get to the map in just a minute. And the other one is the West Boggy Creek, or actually, we're gonna extend that in West Boggy Creek. Uh, I will wanna point out that the findings, preliminary findings, were, uh, presented about a year ago in May, uh, by, uh, via FEMA to a public meeting. And then, actually, uh, in March of this year, they actually filed their, uh, their map, their, uh, their, what they anticipate to be the final map, uh, with, the floodplain insurance rate map, which would be the final one they anticipate. Uh, that had a ninety-day review period, and we did provide some, uh, requests for improvements and changes in that map in May, and they have, um, acknowledged that, or what they have provided is what they call a supplemental acknowledgement, which is basically their response to our request. And I'll go through that in just a minute. This is a map of, uh, basically, the southwest portion of City of Enid. You can see, um, Van Buren, I'm showing just to the right, and then to the, on the upper portion is the O.K. Garrett Road. And the light green area in the southern portion is the tributaries to, uh, Metal Lake. That, that's what, that's whether previously mapped or mapped currently, actually. And then, the darker blue area going out a little bit to the, to the center of the map is West Boggy Creek, and it's only mapped up to the farm rail, um, farm rail railroad system. Uh, I will wanna point out that why the areas are shown in green is because they have mapped that area, but they have not defined flood elevations. They have not done the detailed study in the past. Uh, however, they had done a detailed study up to the farm rail rail system, and it's shown in blue, and there are elevations on there. So, that was the existing map. This is a slide showing the proposed change in the maps that they've, uh, put together from their RISMAP program. Again, you can see the, um, in the center here, the tributaries to Metal Lake. And I will tell you that the light red areas are areas where they see the floodplain would actually increase, the map area would increase anyway, the floodplain is already existing. There are some light, there are some blue areas in here, hard to see in this map, which actually, they're taking out of the floodplain, uh, based because they have done detailed study on these tributaries and are providing those based elevations to be used for, in the future for any development in that area. Also, you'll see a, an area of light red, um, to the, to the left or to the west, uh, on, to the west of the farm rail, uh, railroad tracks, and that's where they're extending, uh, the mapping of West Boggy Creek to the west. And that area is from, uh, uh, Oakwood Road, which is just west of the railroad tracks, to Garland Road, uh, a little further to the west. Okay. Um, in talking about the, the issues, in May, we did submit requests to FEMA to incorporate certain changes and make certain corrections. These are a list of eight items that were submitted. Uh, the first four are some items that, uh, basically, they just had wrong, some names they had wrong on the maps, um, some subdivisions had been added. Uh, they did have the boundary of Vance Air Force Base incorrectly shown. Uh, there were some past letters of map revisions, which were actually corrections in past map, uh, map errors that they had, that they didn't incorporate into the new map, and we asked them to, you know, they've already approved those, they should incorporate those. And that included, uh, making some corrections to the flood insurance study, which is a document that goes along with the map. A couple other items is, we made improvements in the Oakwood Regional Detention Facility, uh, here, and there were new contours for, that were submitted on West Boggy Creek for work that had been done, uh, in that area between Oakwood and Garland. Uh, there also, we felt there was an, there was an error in how they mapped at the Oakwood Mall, and there was a, uh, after-action report submitted, um, uh, on Bob's Farm by, uh, uh, by Bob's Farm, covering basically the contour work and the work, uh, covering the contour, the contours worked done and the field work done on, on that area. I'll try to get into a little more detail. This is the map of Vance Air Force Base. They actually had the boundary down on the northwest part of the base, they had it, the old boundary, which is around this quarter section. Uh, so, we've provided them the information to include that, correct the boundary. What I'm showing now is our bird's eye view of the plan for, uh, West Oakwood Detention. Again, Oakwood is on the right side, Garland is on the left, and this is the improvements were made for the stormwater detention just off Garland and towards Oakwood Road. This is an aerial photo that may be a little better to see. We see the, uh, pond that was developed, which actually is a detention facility to the, uh, next to Garland Road, and the improvements and widening were done in the channel, uh, leading there towards Oakwood Road. This is a map, a little hard to see, but it, it is a map that shows the new contours for the area on Bob's Farm. And I'll point out, um, just on the, to my, to your, to my, our right, uh, the, is Oakwood Road, and on the left side of the drawing is Garland, so that references, and this is the old railroad right-of-way that's, uh, long been vacated, and our detention facility is just south of the facility. But this covers improvements in field work that was done in the Bob's Farms area, uh, on Oakwood Mall. But I have a drawing here showing, uh, the, uh, it's actually the loading dock on Oakwood Mall on the south, at the southeast corner. Uh, but I just wanna show the green areas where the, the map goes through, show it going through the mall, uh, based on our existing map. We provide information showing that actually, the red line is more, is correct. It, uh, it comes up to the facility, but it does not go through the facility because of elevations. So, we provide that information. Okay, so those are, that's what the FEMA, uh, maps they provided, the information we provided them, and their response back is that they have, on these first four items, they've responded back, they'll include those in the map update, those corrections, the boundary corrections, corrections to their studies, things that have been, uh, adopted in the past. The bottom four items, um, the Oakwood West Detention Facility, changing contours on West Boggy Creek, the Oakwood Mall elevation, and the after-action report, uh, they responded that those could be, and those would require a letter of map revision, to go to a formal submittal of a letter of map revision, uh, to get those incorporated into the map. They are not incorporated into the map as they are, as they have it presently. Uh, would require, uh, doing the modeling and providing, uh, the submittals formally to FEMA to get those incorporated. So, get back to where we're at. The actions that's taken place so far, so far, of course, in, uh, in March of this year, they provided public notice of their map as we had shown you. They also, and then in August, just this last month, they filed acknowledgement of our, uh, submittal for the changes, and indicated they would include four of those and not include the bottom four as shown. Required actions, the future actions we'll see a coming is that FEMA will issue the map sometime in the future, anytime in the future. We don't know what their schedule is, but they can, uh, issue it at any time. When they issue the map, we will have, as a city, as a community, will have about five months to complete, to update our ordinance, our stormwater management ordinance, and include, which includes the new map into that ordinance. And we'll have to approve with the state agency, the Water Resources Board. They do have some, uh, review responsibility in that, and then have it adopted within that five-month period. Uh, future actions I wanna talk about is, is on future actions can be taken to actually submit letters of map revisions, uh, you know, for the West, for the Oakwood West Detention, and for the Bob's, uh, Bob's Farm, uh, new contours, uh, that have been placed out there. Now, the timing of those is depending on, uh, um, when we complete the, when we think it would be advantageous to complete the, uh, Oakwood West Detention. The project is not complete, we've done the first phase, there'll be future phases, but we want to discuss, uh, considering we wanna make that application. But when that is improved, and, uh, at some point, we certainly wanna, uh, file a letter of map revision, uh, for, uh, the detention facility. That's basically brings you up to date on where FEMA's at, uh, and where they, where their, and their response to our requests for, uh, changes.
Robert, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Can you pull the map back up?
If, this map?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Um, that's, that's Highway eighty-one where the State Circle is in the middle?
Yes, sir, this is Highway eighty-one. This is Van Buren. This, uh, area just to the north of the study area, in the study area, is Metal Lake. These are the tributaries to Metal Lake, uh, basically Norman Road and South Gate Road. South Gate is shown, uh, I'll show you just in the middle of the study area.
Is there a plan to, um, do anything about the north part of the Boggy Creek area? Because coming down through, um, by the hospital, St. Mary's, and going out east towards, uh, uh, Brookside, that really floods.
Yep.
A lot. That whole Brookside area going to 30th Street.
Yes, there is the, uh, North Boggy Creek Master Drainage Plan that is in place, which, uh, provides for, uh, uh, making certain improvements in that channel, uh, and making, uh, and providing stormwater detention upstream, which, and a lot of that stormwater detention has been in place at Crawson Park, so a lot of that is built, the detention is being built first, that mostly is in place. So, in the future, I'll be working on making channel improvements in North Boggy Creek. And if you look at the plan, there's also some property to be acquired in that area. There's some property on North Boggy Creek that the plan anticipates we cannot provide adequate protection and would be, uh, acquiring those properties. And if you recall, when we go back in the study, we have acquired some properties along North Que, North Boggy Creek over the last few years, uh, they've become available. So, yes, there is a master plan.
Thank you.
Come here.
Uh, Robert, would you advance a, a couple of maps beyond this one? Uh, the one that particularly that showed the property up there, uh, behind the mall, one more time. There you go.
Oh, okay.
Uh, what's that square area up there at the top? I, what, what's that actually?
Okay, um, this map shows, this is the old railroad right-of-way, uh, to the south. Garrett Road, US four twelve is, would cross about just, uh, just low, just below the square area at the top, and this is an area that would include our, uh, Cherokee Detention Facility.
Okay.
That's basically Cherokee Detention Facility at that location.
The other side of Garrett?
Yes, sir.
Behind Kurt Wright Honda?
Yes, it is. Kurt Wright Honda would be just, just south of that area.
Just trying to get out of there, go some...
Yep. These contours were provided, that's just, these were provided by, um, a private individual based on the work done in here, and they've included, uh, that area, just included that detention facility, I think, because we had done, we've done work in there as well.
George?
Uh, the expansion to the base was the property that was donated north of Fox Drive that expanded the base's, uh, uh, area, is that right?
Right, this is the area...
Yeah, Fox Drive used to be there, that used to be the northern boundary on most of the base, on the east side of the base there.
Right, and I think they just, their maps had the old boundary, and we just informed them of the new boundary. They had, they had not included this area in their map. It's a minor detail, but we wanted to get it corrected. And they, they agreed they should correct that.
Further questions? Robert, thank you.
Thank you.
Item five, discuss the Forgotten Ministry's Women's Housing Development in Southern Heights. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, good evening. Uh, my PowerPoint will come up here in a second. That's okay. Um, Planning Commission studied this item at its last meeting in August, and, uh, we have the, their recommendation to you is to approve... recommendation to you is to approve. Thank you, Julie, here we go. The box outlined in yellow is the site of the existing church, it's at 301 East Iowa. Forgotten Ministries is seeking rezoning from R2 to R7, and the reason for the R7 is it allows a boarding house, and that will allow up to 12 women to live there. When we look at rezonings, we always look at our infrastructure, road, water, and sewer to make sure they're adequate to support a higher zoning, and in this case, it was determined they were. At the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, we received six signature protests against the rezoning. Since then, we have received 59 more, for a total of 65. Of those 65 signatures, seven are owners that represent 19.2% having property as close as 300 feet to the area being rezoned. And what that means is, since it's that level, a simple majority of the commission can decide the rezoning this evening. Thirty-five of the owners, seven were within 323, were within a quarter mile, and five were beyond a quarter mile. Then we had tenants that signed, 14 were duplicates, and then there was one unknown address. My last exhibit shows the map and how we calculated this. The blue in the middle is the 301 East Iowa, the area being considered this evening. The first dark ring around it represents 300 feet out. The red properties are the ones that are protesting. Those represent the seven owners within 300 feet. The yellow boxes are the owners that are outside 300, but within a quarter mile. And then I got some gray ones that you can see at the top and the bottom, that those are beyond the quarter mile. Are there any questions for staff?
You say duplicates, you mean individuals that live in the same house?
Yes, sir.
Chris, can you give us a little more detail about who's going to be housed at this location?
On their application, it was transitional housing for women, and there were two identified homeless women and women that were coming just out of prison.
And, and all of, there's, those are the buildings that are on that property at the present time, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
How much, how much has to be done to bring them up to code to make it livable?
That, they will get a building permit, and that'll be a next step for them. If the zoning is approved, they'll get with my Building Department, and Angela will work with them to what they need to do to the inside to get that to dormitory status.
Yes, and I'd like to say, Mayor, Commissioners, Jeremiah Harian from Forgotten Ministries is here tonight. He would like, and he is available to answer some questions. I think he has a short presentation, too, in advance of the next meeting where the rezoning, the hearing and the rezoning itself, if you would allow him to speak.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. So I was going to lay out some of the points that I was going to go through. I was going to talk about the significance of the name of the ministry that we're going to be running there, was going to talk about why Forgotten Ministries chose this neighborhood, or why we're in this area, talk about the program that we will be running in the facility, and then the benefits towards the community. The, the name of the facility is going to be called The Refuge at the Well, and one of the reasons I believe that that's really important is because there's a story in the Bible where Jesus meets this woman at a well, and she comes, and she's in a place in her life where she's struggling, she is in need of assistance with, with things that are going on in her life, and Jesus offers her hope. He offers her a new life. And, and I love that story because a lot of the women that we meet out on the streets, whether it's in the homeless shelter that we run, or in different areas that are here in town, we meet a lot of women that are hurting, women that are going through violent relationships, women that are prostituting themselves out. I met a woman last night, she was out of our shelter because we closed down because of the emergency season, and I asked her where she was staying, and she said that she had three pieces of cardboard, one for her bed, one for her pillow, and one for her blanket. And that's what she was living on until we opened up the shelter again, until this winter. And so, there are a demographic of women in this community that are going through really difficult times, that need a facility that they're able to get back on their feet and kind of start brand-new again, and, and be able to offer the tools that they need to kind of help transition back into a productive life. The second is, I think it's neat that the, the building will be called The Well, and I didn't really understand the significance of that until today, and I had a buddy of mine ask, do you understand what even a well is? And I said, well, yeah, it's a hole where people go and get water out of. He says, yeah, but they used to dig those things because those would be a blessing for the generations to come. And this particular well that Jesus was at was one that was there for hundreds of years that many people were able to come to and to continue to be blessed. And the reason I bring that up is because these were facilities, were long here before I ever started in the neighborhood with Forgotten Ministries. And they were built, and they were given to the pastors that used to run these churches. And their heart, I believe, as you will hear them speak tonight later, they kind of quoted something to me of the heart behind their church. And it was something Jesus said. He said, "He came to proclaim good news to the poor. He was sent to proclaim freedom to the prisoners, to recover sight for the blind, and to set the oppressed free." And you'll hear the heartbeat behind the people that we were able to partner with on this project as it's been moving forward. The facility was given to Forgotten Ministries with a partnership with the Indian Baptist Church. And so that means that we, we're in negotiation with them, that we are going to use this facility for women's housing, but the church building, as we get it renovated, they are going to be able to continue to have church in there. Some of the questions that people in the, in the community have, have asked is, well, why have you chose Southern Heights? Why are you in this neighborhood? When we first started the ministry 10 years ago, we were kind of in every part of Enid, whether it was south, north, east, and west, and it was, it was really to kind of peel back the layers of the poverty, drugs, alcohol, homelessness that was existing in our community, but, which a lot of it was already behind closed doors. And, and, and through the last 10 years, we've been able to see the needs and be able to work towards helping people through difficult times. The Southern Heights has had a apartment complex in it, down at the south end, called the New View Apartment Complex. And we started outreaches out there about eight years ago. And one of the things that drawled us into that neighborhood was the fact that there was a large Pacific Island group that dwelt in that apartment complex. And when we first adventured out there and seen the needs, we seen kids that were eating out of dumpsters, kids that didn't have shoes or clothes as they were going to school, people that were being sexually and physically abused on numbers that would blow most people's minds. And so, as we continued to go out there and help provide some of the physical needs, God opened the door for the land right across the street. The gentleman that owned basically that whole block in that area wanted this facility to be there. He was willing to sell that to us. He knew exactly what we were wanting to put there. And as he continued to sell the land in that block, the ministry has continued to grow to be able to reach the needs of those people that are going through difficult times. So, we are a, we're not a government assistance, so all of our resources come from churches or individuals within Enid, and we are a 501(c)(3). I'm going to play a video that kind of talks about the ministry that we're going to be running there with one of the ones that we already have going.
I had been living the empty life, and then being a part of the Oasis program, even as a director, it's, it's quenched my thirst to know more about God. It's, it's a transitional program, but there's a focus on the spiritual aspect. The Oasis program still offers you a chance to rehabilitate, and that doesn't always mean rehabilitate from crime or drugs, it just means rehabilitate from life.
2015, I was incarcerated with the Department of Corrections, and for me, the loneliness in, you know, when you go to prison, for instance, and, you know, I didn't get letters, and I didn't get to make phone calls, and I didn't really get to hear from anybody. I just literally went through my prison time, and it weighs on your heart.
At my lowest point, I thought I was worthless. Being able to leave prison and go right into a, into the community, to the Oasis program where we had a structure, and I was being able to really experience the love, was good for me to be able to experience that and, and to know what that looks like.
If I didn't have them, I, I would have been back on the streets again, and really had no place to go, probably would have been still drinking, just, you know, making enough money to, to do that, trying to drown my sorrows.
So to me, it truly takes the accountability and the leadership of the Oasis program, and without them guys, I, I don't know where I'd be at.
The Oasis is the, the living water at the end of a dry life.
So the Oasis is a program that we have been running now for three years. It was one that we came before you guys, and we kind of went through the same process where we had to rezone to be able to bring the program into the facility. I can't say the, the success of the program has been actually mind-boggling. I, it's been done better than I thought it would. We've had probably 20 graduates, and all 20 of those guys, besides one, have had jobs, have got back with their families, their marriages have been healed, they've had, started relationships back with their kids. Those guys are productive citizens here in Enid, and it's been amazing to see what some structure and accountability and just a fresh start can help these guys accomplish once they get started. And so, the women's program is going to be ran very similar to the men's program. And so, to be very clear, so the women that are coming in here, we do not allow any sex offender or no violent crime offenders. We do not allow anyone that's struggling with hardcore addictions. So people that are on meth or people that are alcoholics, we refer those to facilities that are actually outside of Enid. We work with a men's facility that's in Fairview called TLC, and we work with another facility in Oklahoma, in Tulsa for women. And so, the women that we try to bring in are ones that are really at a point in their life where they're ready to transition, and we have a very strict rules that are in place. It's kind of a three-phase program, and the rules are in place because in the last 11 years of ministry, I've never found anyone to want to be a part of a program that has rules that want to turn their life around. If there's rules involved, usually that's a filter within itself. We have an interview process and an application that the women all have to fill out. The interview process is, is critical, I believe, because that interview process is with people that are actually from the neighborhood. So, we have people that are from the neighborhood that are on that interview, and when the women come in and have their application, the neighborhood's able to interview them with the director of the program, and they have the say of whether that woman's able to come in. The women that are coming in can live anywhere they want in Enid. We're not still dealing, it's not an incarceration, incarceration program, we're not connected with DOC, it is completely after they're out, they can live anywhere they want. The challenge with that is, is that we could set up, I could buy five or six homes in the community, and I could house, house five women in each house. Now, some ministries do these types of programs, but I believe that they're a little less effective than the program that we're trying to move, move forward with, is because if we're able to house 11 women in there, I'll also be able to house a house mom. And so this is a lady that lives on-site, and she's able to take care of them, she's able to help them with their programs, their classes they go through, Alcohol Anonymous classes, money management, job training. She checks their curfew, she makes sure they're in here on time, she makes sure they're able to get to their jobs, and able to make sure that they're staying in touch with their boss to make sure that they're fulfilling the requirements of the program. And so I think the house mom is a benefit because that keeps the women on track and helps them from being distracted. Part of our program, some of the concerns the neighborhood has had is about visitors. Well, what if these ladies bring in bad baggage, bad boyfriend, bad husband? So our, our program is designed where we don't allow them to have visitors for 30 days. The second 30 days, it has to be a director-approved, and that's only family members. And in the third to sixth month of the program, it's director-approved, and it can be friends outside of the family. And so, we try to monitor that very closely, because you'll see that in Oklahoma, we're the largest, Oklahoma has the largest rate of women incarcerated in the United States. And, and Garfield County is actually one of the worst counties for that, but the recitizen rate of women that end up back in prison, or men, is around 95 to 97%. And so, I believe we have an epidemic that's stirring here in Oklahoma with women that are getting out and have nowhere to go. Along with that, let's see. Another concern was, is about ladies having vehicles, because Southern Heights has areas where it's challenging to park, and we don't want to see people parking on the streets. We don't allow vehicles in the program. The house mom actually has a transportation system that gets them to and from work. So the benefits of the community, this is something that, has been some concerns for the neighbors, the increase of property value. So the, the statistics that I have off of that is when we moved into the southern area, we bought the land down there for about $6,000, is which we built our campus on. When we built that, built that facility on that property, the property around the facility doubled to triple. So I'll give you some examples. The New View Apartment Complex sold online for $1.2 million, and the owner from California has put $1 million in it. He is now asking $4.2 million. The facility diagonal of the center, they bought it at a land auction for $500, and we bought that land for $10,000. Same with the community garden that we have, that was a facility that a guy by the name of Pete wanted $3,000 for, and when the facility was bought, it went up to $10,000. And so, I believe, you know, any time that you invest money into a, into a community, it's going to increase property value. In the facility that we're working towards to approve, we have already invested over $240,000 in that women's facility already. That facility itself was to the point where the city was probably going to condemn it. It was that bad, and we were able to get in there with resources around the community and start that process with general contractors and licensed electricians that are donating, donating their times to help make that facility already look better. Pleasing to the eye, so everything we do, whether it's the 580 coffee shop, whether it's the community garden, and you can kind of see some of the pictures that we have at the end of the slide, some of the pictures of what it looked like after and what it looked like before. We have the men's housing, where it's an empty lot, and it looks completely different now. And then we have the community garden that we've been working on this, this season. You know, our heart is to make the community look better because we want the neighbors to feel like it's a place that they want to come home to. So, part of the economic development that we're trying to help with is, you know, guys or women across the board, when they get out, and this is the facility, this right here is the women's facility, that already looks different from what it used to be. When they get out of prison and they get back into the community, they say it takes three years for 97% of them to get back in prison. Part of that is contributed to where they have to go. I remember a guy I talked to that was getting, I said, "What are you going to do if we don't let you in the program?" He says, "The only option I have is to go back to my girlfriend that's a drug dealer, or my family that makes drugs." And I said, "You're never going to make it." And he said, "No, I won't." And that's part of the problem with people that are getting out of the prison or off the streets, they're just pouring into our neighborhoods already. And without a program in place to help them transition, they're not getting a job, they're not being productive citizens, they're adding to crime rate, they're adding to the drugs that are coming in here. And so, when we get the program in place, this helps the women get on their feet and helps them transition. It also helps teach mothers, and I believe this is important for a lot of the women that we, we minister to, is learning how to become a mother. And when these mothers are taken from their kids, and they're either put into foster care, or to DHS, or they're put into, you know, homes that maybe the kids aren't wanted, we see this growing rate of kids that are acting up in schools, that their education is getting lower. You know, with the marshalleys, I think it's up to 70% of them are dropping out by the age of eighth grade. And so, you know, part of this program is to restore the family together, restore the mom's relationship with their kids, to restore the relationship with their husband. And, you know, I think a lot of times we try to label the people that are coming out of prison or off the streets as addicts or criminals, but these are people like you and me. And, and I'm going to guarantee that I'm one of those guys that should have been in the program at one point in my life. And, and I had a bad past, and I had a bad history, and if it wasn't for God's grace, I would have been in a lot worse place. But, these are men and women that need our help as a community, and they need a new start. And, and I know it can be successful because I'm seeing it happen in these men's lives in the Southern Heights neighborhood. And I know that Enid is, has a heart for people that are hurting, because I've seen it since the last 11 years of being here. And so, I'm excited about working with the neighborhood. I've already talked with several people that'll be here tonight that are going people that'll be here tonight, that are gonna talk about some concerns they've had and how they've seen the benefits of how it's changed their mind. And, and so, that's kind of my thing, so if anyone has any questions, I'd love to answer those.
Is there a limit how long they can stay in this facility?
So, our facilities are ran with a six-month program, and then as they graduate, if we have open rooms, we allow them to stay longer just so they can save up money, so that they can get an apartment, down deposit bills paid. So I've got five guys that graduated in the last six months that are still in the facility that we, we do a budgeting system where we help save their money, and as they get enough, it helps them transition into the apartment into, you know, paying their bills.
Jeremiah, do you keep up with them once they transition out of, for example, Refuge at the Well?
So, all of our men that have graduated, you know, they're not coming to program just to kind of get a quick start, they're looking for a family. And every one of those guys that we've been able to minister to for the last three years, they've become part of our family, and they go to our cookouts, they eat at Peggy's House, they're around our kids, they're bringing their kids now and playing in the gym. And so, they stay a part of the ministry and are now, some of the guys in the program are actually mentors to the new men that are coming through. So we try to challenge with that mentor program that they stay involved, so they're there with the Bible studies, and they're with the classes that are being taught, so they can help steer these guys in the right direction.
So, how do you channel individuals in? How do you find out the people that are in need? Because I'm, I'm pretty sure everyone isn't aware of your facility or where it's gonna be. How will you be able to know who's in that need? Do you go through the Department of Corrections? Do you go through other entities that deal with this type of situation, or, or just...
We, we have found, you know, with the men's facility, that we actually haven't got a very large percentage of guys coming out of prison. I would say 75, 80% of our people that are transitioning are from the streets. We had three this season from the Mercy House closing down, which is the homeless shelter. We had three of them go into the Oasis program, and I, I believe two out of those three have already got jobs. And so, a lot of it, especially with poverty or homeless, they're catching wind of, there's a facility that helps them kind of get started. And so, that's kind of word of mouth through the community here in Enid. Now, you know, once you get into the DOC, you know, women's housing for ladies getting out of prison is very few and far between, and I know that's something that when people find an outlet, that's something that people will probably be calling us and asking if we have availability through that. And that's why the screening process is so important, because, you know, I want the neighbors to feel safe with who they're inviting in. And, and I think something that's important, you know, we're not looking at, you know, next month to jump into this, you know, loving women deep. You know, I think, you know, to help the community to feel safe, you know, I would like to start with two, three, four, five, whatever number that is, that this, you know, neighborhood feels safe with, and then we work and grow on that as we're able to add to that number.
And also, say you get an extreme influx of women or individuals that have a need, what is your ultimate goal?
Say that again?
So, you, you receive an influx of people that are in need. What is your ultimate goal?
I think the challenge that we've seen, let me, if this answers the question, the influx of people that we've had through the last two years of just the Mercy House has been overwhelming. We've had at our largest capacity 96 homeless living in the shelter. And so, I think the needs will be probably more than we'll ever be able to meet, and so the hope is to partner with organizations, Salvation Army, Hope Outreach, different churches, surrounding towns that have other facilities, to help, you know, direct those ladies to where they can get help. Because, I mean, there's no way we're ever gonna reach the needs that are out there, but, you know, my heart's to get them somewhere where they can start that process of turning things around.
Jeremiah, what kind of certification does the director have to have?
So, we don't, we don't have a director yet, we're still looking for that. We are potentially looking at a lady that has been working in the prisons for quite a while, she has ran some ministries here in Enid, and I don't want to say her name because I don't want to jump ahead of, you know, us hiring her or anything, but she would be highly qualified as far as knowing the background, knowing the language, knowing the things that ladies would try to do. And so, it has to be someone that's very intentional, because you'll hear from Anthony tonight, he runs our men's program, he's kind of like their daddy, I mean, I'll be honest, he, because a lot of these men or women, they didn't have a mom, they didn't have a dad, the dad was a drug addict, dad was in prison, I mean, the cycle that has kind of been started in some of these families, when someone steps in the program, they're saying, "Hey, I want to change that cycle." And so, really, those directors become kind of like their mother or their father, where they're able to be kind of like their cheerleader or their coach, and helping them, encouraging them, "Hey, you did a good job, you got your first paycheck, let's put that back in savings. What do we, what's your next goal in your life?" And so, we try to come up with a goal sheet when they first come in the program, that the director helps them work through those checkpoints as they're going through the phases.
I, I heard you mention that they'd be doing classes, it sounds like, you know, with many of them coming off the street, not having jobs, is there any projects, you know, community service, anything that they're gonna, that they'll be doing in the neighborhoods? Or...
Yes, absolutely. So, you know, Forgotten Ministries was founded on the ideal of being mission-minded, and that's why we have the vehicles that we're able to go around town and cook food, give out clothes, different things. And so, some of the things that the men have done that's in the Oasis program is they have been a part of painting five different houses in the Southern Heights community, they've been a part of helping pick up trash, they've been a part of helping clean up things, they've been helping in renovating the refuge, the women's building. And so, you know, that's part of our program, is teaching them, it's not just about you, it's about serving others. And so, again, the women, that'll be a part of their, their program where they're able to give back to the community and help those that are less fortunate. And, and so, that's, you know, I'm, I'm excited when they get to get out there, you know, that, and that the community gets to know them, and they get to see the faces behind ladies that are being able to get their lives back on track.
Jeremiah, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We will meet right here at 6:30. We are adjourned.
Thank you for watching the Enid City Commission Study Session. All meetings are broadcast on local cable Channel 12 and in high-definition on Channel 112. In addition, the study session is live-streamed on the web at enitv.org. If you have any questions or comments regarding this broadcast, please visit the City of Enid website at enid.org.